All up to you, Eric.
That's it?
It's all up to you.
That's all up to me.
Okay, Nate must be ready. Quarter order.
I have only a dozen little stick.
The city of Ellsworth planning board meeting for June 7, 2023. Introductions. We don't have anybody to my right yet. John Barrio Chair.
Rick Lyles Vice Chair.
Mike Hany alternate.
Patrick Wine, alternate.
Staff.
Matthew Williams, City Planner.
Laurie Roberts, Co-Enforcement.
Thomas Scamman, Fire Inspector.
Okay, item number two, adoption minutes from the May 3, 2023 regular meeting and the May 19, 2023 special meeting.
And John, I think just quickly you should make a note that both Mike and Patrick are voting.
Oh, yep, right now, both of you are voting. If one person comes in, you're still both voting. If two come in, Mike, you're.
I don't have to, okay, that's fine.
So what about the minutes?
I like them.
Do you like them enough to put it?
Sure, do you want to do them separately or can we do them together?
I can move them together.
You can do them together.
Okay, move that the meeting minutes of the May 3 and May 19 special meeting, be adopted, accepted and adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Hold on, David.
I was in another meeting, so I should probably abstain from voting to adopt.
You can read them.
It's a majority anyway, so.
I mean, I can read them, but I can't attest to their validity.
I think we've had people who've missed the previous meeting vote on it.
He's playing, he's been working in Bar Harbor, so he's playing by the rules now.
Do we need four to have a?
It's four for a quorum.
Four for a quorum, but doesn't have to be four votes.
Yeah, it's three, it's the majority here, right? That does things like that stuff.
Don't know if you can abstain from the vote and still have three people vote to accept it.
I believe you can.
Think you can?
This is gonna be a long night, I could just say.
Unless they're my one.
We haven't gotten past the minutes yet.
I mean, I can't vote on minutes of the meeting I didn't attend.
Sure you could. Might be inappropriate, but.
I'm not going to.
Okay. There you go.
He's a lawyer. I know.
I mean, the quorum just says there shall be a, shall, no meeting of the board shall be held without a quorum consisting of at least four members authorized to vote. We have three in favor.
One abstaining.
Yep. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, preliminary plan review of major use site plan entitled "Oulet", self-storage for applicant Plymouth Engineering, Inc., and owner RO Enterprises, LLC. The proposal is to create a self-storage site with free storage buildings. The subject property is approximately 29.8 acre lot located Route 1A, tax map 112, Lot 7, in Drinking Water and Resource Protection zoning districts. People representing the applicant.
Good afternoon, my name's Keith Ewing for Plymouth Engineering.
Keith?
Yep.
I'm Adam Violet with Plymouth Engineering.
Floor is yours.
So this is an existing lot. Our client has purchased the property and would like to put three storage units on it, or three storage buildings on it. The C1 drawing shows the site layout. Will be off of US Route 1A. There's a wood, there's a gravel burn between the road and the building, so the buildings won't be seen from the road. In the TRT report, we had to add a fire tank. Apparently, I misinterpreted that and I made it a pond, so we'll switch that to a tank. What questions would you gentlemen have and lady?
I mean, is there a fire pond or pond?
There's nothing out there right now.
Okay. Sounded like there was a pond on, on site.
By code, by the code, fire code ponds are not allowed in the long, it has to be underground system.
We talked about it. He's gonna switch it back over to a tank for the final.
You'll show that on the plan so it's accessible? You'll show that on your final plan so it's accessible with fire trucks and stuff like that?
Yes, right now, it's right beside the gravel driveway that's there already.
And I'll be, that'll be a 5,000 gallon cistern?
Yes.
Correct.
That's good with you guys?
The reason the pond's bigger is so that if it froze, you would still have access to the water underneath.
I guess I have a question for Mike or Tom. Is it doing a cistern or a pond? I mean, is this, is a cistern required because there's structures? And we had a fairly recent small, three, four lot subdivision that the fire chief approved a fire pond.
Is that right?
No, what it, what that was, there was an existing fire pond on Winkin Paw, or right?
Happy Town.
On Hecton, yes, sorry. Out on Happy Town that we utilized to, to make an agreement with the lot owners so that way we could pass that minor subdivision at that point. That was already an existing pond already there.
Okay.
Similar to this here out on Higgins Elbow, we did the same similar thing for the storage unit, we made required them to put a 5,000 gallon cistern in. So we had some sort of water out there because the way the hydrant sits, it's across the road on Bucksport. So it was, that was not a feasibility to sit there and drop a line from, and shut that road down, so we made them drop. And the same thing for this on Bangor, there's no water out there. So we were, we asking them to put a 5,000 gallon cistern in, so we have something there to be able to fight a fire if there even is one.
Other question under, yours on the TRT is required to be paved in the chapter four, Article 3.14.
The drawings, the drawings were paved, it's just the hatch wasn't correct, so, and they have modified the drawings now so that the hatch is the same.
Well, my question was more to the fire department, because, I mean, there's a storage facility out on the Bucksport that was approved fairly recently that's not paved.
Who am I speaking to? You talking about the Higgins?
No, the, just down the road from DCP. It used to be WHCA, I think it was Bernie Gordon's storage buildings.
On the Bucksport Road.
On the Bucksport.
Yes, I, no, I'm, wait, that was before me, that was when Mike was still the inspector.
I'm not sure why we allowed it that way, I can't remember.
I can't speak to that one, I'm sorry.
I think they asked for, didn't they ask for a waiver for that? Because it's, because it's not really, I don't, I don't remember, I'm sorry.
I'll look into it.
I'm saying.
I'll get you answer.
I think we should be consistent.
Well, I can say the ones that we have that, that have come forth when I went from me being here have all been required to pave. We haven't, we haven't waived any of those.
You guys are unfamiliar with where their lot is, it's just a little bit past Cove Way on the left, maybe four driveways past Cove Way, I believe. You said for the most part, it's gonna be shielded from the road, I know there's a fairly high burn there.
There's a picture in the.
Appendix D.
Yeah.
It's in the back, I believe, of the appendix D. Yeah, last two pages.
We're not intending to change that burn or the vegetation that's in front of it at this time, other than making the driveway more prevalent.
So you're counting on that vegetation being the screening?
It is the screening.
It is the screening, okay, because we have a note from code that you might need more than just rocks for screening.
We added additional trees in between the rocks that are actually along the access driveway.
Yeah, that comment was meant for the driveway, not the driveway.
The driveway, gotcha.
So you are aware of, in the building code 903, two concerning firewalls if you're over a certain amount of square footage?
Yes, I'm, already had this conversation up the road at the previous town, so, okay. But, there's also a fire separation detail on the civil plans, just for your information at this point. As soon as we have building drawings, we'll get those updated.
Just as a point of convenience, I guess, because this will be coming back, right? Yeah, because it's preliminary. Just to show the outline of the buildings or whatever on a couple of these drawings, it's kind of like, here's a drawing of the area, and it's not at all clear with a.
C1?
I don't remember which, what the ones are, but yeah, on some of these are fine, I mean, like that is obviously good. But I'm just saying that on some of the other drawings, for our reference and reviewing it, it would be good if the, the actual buildings were shown. And yeah, that'd be, doesn't have to be great detail. Okay? Now, this is right before the passing relief lane that goes, when you're going towards Bangor, is that right, or?
It's during the passing.
I'm sorry?
It's during that pass.
Oh, it's during it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I thought it was just before, so, never mind. On, on the, the one drawing which is C3, which I think shows the turning radius of the fire truck and all that.
Yep.
Does that, they can't stay in the lane, in the one lane and make that turn, they have to go through the middle lane? Is that right?
You're talking out at the road?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
We use the ladder truck for the template.
Right, no, I get that, but the question is, does the ladder truck go out into the other lane, or can it make that turn? Well, first of all, you know, I guess I'm not too concerned with the turn because that's the Torrid Ellsworth turn, and I'm pretty sure the ladder truck will come the other way.
Well, that's kind of, what I was wondering too is, you know, why does it show the entrance and exit from the north?
I think one of the things is probably because this is kind of an acute, it's not a right angle per se, and that's where it's gonna be harder to make the turn.
Correct.
See that, yeah. Great minds that collide. But, still, question still comes, what did, what did the state say about a decelerate, I'm sorry?
They were very happy with that location because people will be able to move over into the third lane to get around anybody making the turn.
Okay, I, I don't think I would share that, but that's okay. I guess the question that I have is, did they say anything about a decel lane or anything like that for people, for, not for trucks, but for cars that were coming towards? Okay, so they're, they're good?
Yep.
Okay, they're roads. In terms of the proposed sign?
That we're still working on, the client hasn't created one yet, so we're in the process of helping him.
Okay.
We'll have that for the final.
My guess, my question is the visibility of the sign?
It's just gonna be.
I mean, it, it, it looks like it would be behind some brush or whatever, following this map, and not visible from the road almost?
It's pretty close to not being visible, but.
Is there some way we can make it more visible? Because again, you know, if it's a low speed road or whatever, that's no big deal, right? But this is, like, traffic's moving at least at 55, right? Through here, it's probably more like 70, but that's all right. So my, but my question is, sometimes driveways are hard to find along the way, and so if that sign can be, you know, jacked up a little bit or whatever, so that it's actually visible for the, for the, you know, for anybody who wants to use the facility. Now, you can argue that they don't know where it is, but that seems like a shallow argument to me.
Well, by the time token, I have to be careful that it's not blocking view.
Oh, right.
The road, people leaving.
Yeah, well, that's, it's way back there. Unless they move it, right?
We're limited on that 50-foot offset, so.
Is this the one where you, yes, you, you spelled ladder as in ladder truck incorrectly? It would be, it's, obviously, it's a minor thing, but it would be nice to have it spelled correctly on the artificial maps that we're signing, just, just for the element, right?
There is no fence on the entrance road, correct, until you get inside to where you start going into the storage?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, where the Knox box location thing is.
So truck control off, that's what you want, you had an issue with one before where really.
Yeah, I would think. That's far, I mean, far enough.
Yeah. You said minimal clearing is required.
This site was used during the construction of Route 1A. It's a giant gravel pad that we're building on. So there isn't much growing on it at this point. And we've attempted to maintain that the buildings fall on the gravel pad that's there.
If I'm not mistaken, the people that owned it previously, the applicant, I think had some clearing in there within the last couple.
There, if you look at the Google Maps pictures which are included in there, there is a couple of driveway-like areas that have turned back into the equivalent to grass. He had, I would've told you he was creating a campground, but didn't know he needed a permit, but.
Darn code.
And we'll come back to you guys before we develop anything beyond the initial three storage buildings.
So the picture with the truck in it?
Yes.
That's actually, that, where the truck is, is actually before the site, right?
That's the driveway into the site.
Oh, that, oh, that is the driveway, okay.
We're making it slightly wider than it currently is, so.
Okay. So right now, the sign would be behind a big rock.
It's very likely to be behind the big rock because I have to stay 50 feet off of the highway.
I'm five feet back from the pond.
Yeah, it's, that's the 50.
Have much to say about that. Yeah.
It's the right of way.
Okay.
You're utilizing the security, like the security.
Cameras.
Cameras. Like where they have to punch a code in to get into the lot or just, not that it's required.
He's issuing cards, I believe, but I don't think he's gotten that far.
Any other question? Any issues from staff?
Um, just during the TRT process, there had been some discussion that you have to check with DOT regarding the driveway, there may have been permanent application already completed, is there an update on that?
It's.
I would do that. Those were fruit, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, most of the other issues, there's small changes to the plan, I guess the lighting plan for final.
Yes, that's in the process.
Yep. And, that's it, otherwise.
I don't recall, do we have the permit from DOT in the packet or?
Uh, the permit that they sent for the application with, is in the perm, uh.
Is in the packet.
And then we got confirmation that was approved.
Yes.
Yeah, it's an appendix D.
Okay.
The letter that went to them or from them?
No, the actual sign permit with what they had specified. And we've made the adjustments to what they've shown on these prints to show that.
That was in appendix D?
Yep.
Any other issues from staff?
No.
And it looks according to your checklist that they pretty much have completed the information that is required at this point.
Public hearing?
Nelson was not here, can't be on track. Public hearing for, if there's anybody here who'd like to address this development? I'll close the public hearing.
Ask Nate if there's anyone on Zoom, I don't think there is.
Is there anybody on Zoom, who's?
Nate.
Nate's, anybody on Zoom, Nate?
Speaking. Uh, nobody is asking questions.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Sure, the, make a motion that the preliminary plan review of a major use site plan title, I'm not gonna say it correctly. "Oulet", self-centered for applicant Plymouth Engineering and owner RO Enterprises, be accepted as being complete at this point.
Second.
Hold on, David. Thank you, gentlemen.
St. John Valley, what's that?
What's that?
In the St. John Valley, relax.
Lots of things that I can't pronounce, other people can.
Yeah.
Matt. Thank you, thank you very much.
Looks up on the agenda, item number four, preliminary plan review of a major use site plan, a major subdivision plan entitled WL Properties, LLC. The applicant owner WL Properties, LLC, proposes to create a multifamily development with a total of 116 units. The subject property is approximately 121.8 acre parcel located at the end of Eastwood Lane, tax map 22, Lot 13, in commercial, limited residential, and resource protection zoning districts.
See, I thought the, I thought this was the public coming in with visual aids, and I was kind of really excited.
Here, I'll, I'll help you position him real quick.
I think we can do it right about there, but that's enough for you guys. I think right there's an okay.
It's good, it's a little crooked, but it's okay, as long as they can see it.
Okay.
So you look at it like this.
Could you introduce yourselves?
Yes, Shelley Lizotte from Artifacts, a civil engineer, and this is Scott Pelletier of WL Properties. This project is a residential development, 116 units and 21 buildings on the lot. Tax map 22, Lot 13, the entire property is about 122 acres, and it is off of Eastwood Lane, as, as you had said. That is also, Eastwood Lane is off of Route 1A, just beyond.
Notice in several places in your application, that's Route 1, not 1A?
Where it says Route 1, rather than 1A.
Yes, your, your property comes out on Route 1.
Okay, Route 1, okay.
Not Route 1A, it's mentioned several times in the whole application, so you might wanna.
I always get it confused. Okay.
Many do.
Okay, so I made sure that changes. So, we came to the board about a year ago on sketch plan, I'm not sure if, who was here at that time, but you may have been familiar with it. Originally, we had a, a little bit larger of a development that expanded out into the back part of the, the lot, but kind of condensed it more to the front to make things, you know, lesser of an impact at this point. So, we did a TRT meeting a week and a half ago, and made our changes to the questions that they had, and resubmitted a package for you to review, and ready to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll start off, on page three, look, under exist, 606.7, existing site conditions, and at the bottom, you mentioned, the sewer and water will be served by respect, respective public utilities access from existing private mains in Eastwood Lane. Early discussions with the likely owners of the private mains have proved unsuccessful, and we anticipate needing further assistance and coordination with the city utilities in order to move forward with connections. Kind of explaining.
Well, originally, when I had first spoken to the person from the water department, those lines were put in by the private owner of, I believe it's the eye care place, so connecting into those. The tennis court? Yeah, the tennis center. And there was some discussion about having to contact them to find out about connecting into those, that main, and extending it, because they are the ones that invested the money to install it. So it's a private line until you get out to Route 1.
Does the water line go all the way to the Bowlin Alley, or are they on, are they on a well?
I don't know if they're on a well, I doubt it, they probably are connected to city water.
If they're connected to city water, they were here long before the tennis center.
That's probably true, you know, I, I know the tennis center had been there a while, and then they added on to it. The sets of plans that we have shows the water line there, so I'm not really sure the exact date when that was done, and, or if it was updated at some point in that interim.
Do we know where Reggie stands on that, or what, I mean, what?
I wasn't aware that this was a specific issue. I know there's discussion about whether or not the line itself would be public or private running from their prop, like into their property, but the line previously, I had discussed that with Reggie, if whether that was city-owned or not, is, and during TRT, it appeared that he thought it was city-owned, but I guess it's not.
You know, my, my information is from about a year ago, so it was something that was brought up at the prior TRT meeting with the sketch plan, so if, if that information wasn't correct, then I'm, I don't, you know, I'm not sure. I have sent a letter to him, and.
To the water superintendent or?
Yeah, to, to Reggie and to Michael Harris about the water in the sewer. So, at the point when we start doing discussions on connections there, I'm sure the, the answers to those questions will come up. I mean, if, if it, if it comes to it and that is a private line and, and they can't connect into it, then, then the, the alternative is to add a line all the way to the main and, and Route 1, but, I mean, that seems kind of, you know, redundant.
The, I assume, I mean, your property has a right of way over.
It does.
Eastward Lane. Can you explain to me the, how, the arrangements of these living units, how they are arranged?
Within the buildings themselves?
Yes.
There are.
Because you've got four and six, and like, three or two or something like that?
So they, they, on the plan, they're shown as, what you can see is like three blocks or two blocks next to each other, set back about four feet. Each one of those blocks is two units, and they are upstairs, downstairs, so townhouse style.
Okay.
They will have two separate doors, I believe, on the exit from, from the front.
Each building, each unit has a front and a back door?
Each one has a front and back door, its own, but served from that one, like slab. And at the end of each one, there is a laundry and utilities room.
Okay, so, and, so every apart, every building is designed that way, correct? So you'd have none that where you have an apartment? So, you'd have none that where you have an apartment above?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So, I was looking at the TRT report, one of the things that it's talking, one of the things that it said here was, it talked about firewalls and it says check and we'll make sure that they are high challenge firewalls for the preliminary. This being the preliminary, I find no design of a high challenge firewall in here.
Yes, I, I had discussion about that with, I'm not sure if, I didn't go over that with Lori, but with our, our architect that's in, that's, does code reviews all the time. And his, his understanding was it's a two hour wall.
Absolutely not.
No?
No, ma'am.
The definition of a high challenge firewall, as I understood it, had something to do with the danger of whatever was in the buildings.
Correct. If you, and I'll give you, I'll give you a reference you can take a look at in the International Building Code, the IBC, section seven oh six point one, one point one, and point two, okay? It specifically explains what a high challenge firewall is. And basically what it is, it's a wall designed and built so that if you have fire in one section and there's a collapse, that wall stays standing. So, it's a self-standing, self, basically structural in and of itself. So, that nothing can pass through it. It's not supposed to have any ductwork in it, not supposed to have any plumbing in it. The other thing you might want to reference is NFPA two eleven. By standard, by statute, that is part of the building code. And it actually ref, uh, the building, building code actually references NFPA two eleven. Or excuse me, two twenty-one, as to what a high challenge firewall is. So, in between each two units of how you have them separated, there needs to be a high challenge firewall between those units. It's a very expensive wall to build and an expensive wall to maintain. So, it looks like you're going to have several of those. And you need to have a design that's engineered by an engineer and approved by the fire department before, before you can even start with that. So, it's something that's very, very crucial to this kind of a design. And, you know, the challenge, high challenge firewall is an appropriate way to separate these buildings. And, and that's basically what it does, is it separates it from one and two family dwellings, from apartments, which you want to get away from. The only alternative you have is a thirteen hour sprinkler system in every building. So, that's something you may want to take a look at and weigh the differences as to whether you go with a high challenge firewall, where you can't put any plumbing in it or any ductwork or anything like that versus sprinkling the building with a thirteen hour system.
Okay. I know Scott has built a, a lot of these, so I'm not sure if that's just something I wasn't familiar with that you're already doing.
I believe we are, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that would be, that would be applicable for each three unit building?
Each unit that has three or more units in.
Okay, but I think, cause we only have two minutes of three units.
Yep.
This on, but along those same lines, on some of these three unit clusters or whatever you want to call it, there is this little skinny thing, is that the laundry room you're talking about?
Yeah.
Does that count at all?
Uh, well, there'd be, they can have a one hour wall between that and, and the living space.
Okay, but. All right, but here, we're just going to look at this matter. So, it would have to go here or could it go there?
It'd have to go both places.
My both?
Because you've got two units here.
Yeah.
Between every two units.
Yeah.
You have to have.
The fancy wall.
Okay, so this one would have one, this one would have two.
Oh, so even for, even the two building things have to have it?
Yep.
So, they all have to have that?
So, if it's three or more units, they have to have that high challenge firewall.
Between?
The one and two.
Okay.
Or two and three, excuse me.
The ones that look like they're two, there, there was, are actually four units, because there's two in each one of those blocks.
Yeah, see this one here.
Okay.
See, this one has four.
Yeah, I thought that might be where.
Four units in it.
Gotcha.
Okay, this one has six.
Okay, sorry, sorry, stupidly, sorry. So, you get a lot of firewalls is the point to take care of.
Yep.
Now, did you say on each one of those units, there's going to be two apartments in each unit? Are both of those?
Because they're double.
Downstairs and upstairs or is one tenant upstairs and one tenant downstairs?
They're, they're all townhouses.
So.
Each unit has an upstairs and down.
Downstairs, okay.
Yeah.
How many bedroom units are we, two?
Two.
Everyone moves to.
Yeah.
And I guess the reason why I bring it up to you in the preliminary here is because depending on what it's going to cost you to build those walls and establish them, the offset cost between that and a sprinkler may be almost the same price or maybe less. But the demographics of the whole project changes because now you have to allow for space for sprinkler valving and underground piping for fire protection, water supply, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's something that, you know, I, I needed to bring it up so that you understood.
Are there sidewalks within the development?
We had that discussion at the TRT. I had not shown them on here. I had a widened, a widened shoulder. So, the, the road was actually twenty-four feet wide with the shoulders on both sides, which is more than what the requirement for this particular road is. But we talked about the opportunity to, to try and fit it in to that small right of way, because we are kind of limited in the right of way there. And, and I haven't gone beyond what we had, is there's not enough time to do any more redesigning between the TRT and, and now. So, it's something I will have to look at before the final, for sure. I did show a, a walkway, gravel walkway going down towards Resort Way, which is probably a good place to send people if the Resort Way would extend to their drive with a walkway, because that's easier to get to Walgreens and the shopping center there than it would be to walk on Route one down to that corner.
The medical center is down that way as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just if, cause I also see you've built a, you know, the, the area of a bus stop for any children living there. And just thinking about children walking from whatever unit they're living in to the bus stop, it seems like sidewalks would be a good safety measure.
There are, and I'm not sure, you probably can't see it at this scale because it, it was just too hard to get them all in on one plan, but I will blow them up at some point. There, there are wider gravel shoulders along each one of the accesses to the buildings. And then on the main drive, there's also, they're like four feet wide. I've widened them on one side. So, you know, you wouldn't have to walk in the pavement, on the pavement.
I'm sorry, you said they're gravel though?
They are, the shoulders.
That wouldn't work so well for ADA compliance, right?
That, that is true.
So, I would suggest that you might want to take a look at that.
Was there, has there been any discussion with, whatever they do for sidewalks within the development, extending the sidewalk down Brookside Way to Eastward Lane down to Route one?
So, when the, we talked about sidewalks, it didn't come up, but where the conversation ended was the original plant during TRT, there wasn't a width of the part of Eastward Lane outside of their development. And so, we weren't, we didn't know how much space there was, if they have to make it wide enough for emergency access, if there would be room for sidewalks. So, now we have it, it'll have to be a conversation that we have going forward, but we didn't finish that conversation.
Well, what's the width of Eastward Lane?
It looks like now it's labeled as twenty-five point six.
It widens out down at the, at the intersection, like twenty-nine feet.
Any idea what the right of way is for the whole, the whole road? Is it fifty foot or?
Probably fifty feet.
Uh, yeah, it's probably about fifty feet.
What's that?
About fifty feet.
What's the requirement of the ordinance for sidewalks?
Uh, there's a requirement for sidewalks within the development, but they're kind of quiet on if you have to go onto someone else's property to continue them out to like a state road or something.
And do you all have control over the, was it East Way, Eastwood Way at the? Yeah, right, that one. The Eastwood, whatever. You know, it comes, I understand that's, you know, you, Route one is the state road obviously. But do you have any control over how wide you can, you can make the Eastwood Road at the intersection? You know, or what, for example, if you wanted to have it flare out so you could have a left turn and a right turn lane and an, and an in lane, is there space to do that? And if there's not space, do you have control over that roadway so that you could make it wider? How would we accommodate that?
That would require private conversations between the landowner who owns that section of Eastward Lane and the developer.
Okay, so, so you don't have any agreement currently with them?
No.
Okay.
I, I believe Scott has had some discussion in the past.
They already thought that guy owns it anymore.
But, yes, it's been a while, it's been a while, so it's definitely needs to be revisited.
Depends on the language in the easement as well. If it's a broad, broadly drafted easement and allows for improvements for all purposes of a way, I would argue that allows for the construction of sidewalks.
So, you might want to look into what, what you have to do to make that happen or if you can make it happen. And especially at the intersection, I mean, from my perspective on this point, so that you could possibly allow for a right turn lane, a left turn lane coming out. Are the turnarounds, they seem non-typical to me. Is that correct? Or are you happy with all little turnarounds at the end of all these little streets and roads?
The issue I had with it was is that I couldn't get the accurate scale, because all we had was digital copies or printer upstairs broke. So, I wasn't able to do like actually measure out to get, say yes or no, like they meet the requirements or not, so.
Okay, so that has to be resolved. I mean.
Yeah.
You know, normally you'd have like a cool cul-de-sac with a hammerhead thing or whatever.
Right.
And here you seem to have a, a space, you know, for the turnaround, because it's at the end of the, at the end of the little road. But it's not clear to me that, that that meets your standards, so.
Right.
But that's on your list of things to do, right?
So, if our printer gets fixed or I get a hard copy, then it will be.
Okay.
We, um, yes, I was reading it through the, the codes and the ordinance. The, the definition of streets, we're not quite sure. Like, I mean, if, if each one of those driveways for the parking or parking lots are considered a street, then.
If you, if you have more than two leading into a, into that area, the assessor considers them to be streets.
More than two, I'm sorry, more than two what?
More than two like developments or houses, they can, the assessor is going to sit there and say, this is a street.
So, would that be considered dead end though? Because it said if it's over a hundred and fifty feet?
Right, so if it's over a hundred and fifty feet, it's considered a dead end.
Okay.
And that's where I couldn't measure out.
Yeah.
Because our printer upstairs is broke and I only have it on digital like hand.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I, I, my intention was to put the, put a turning template on it and show the forty foot truck being able to turn around. But I wanted to clarify, you know, which ones of those needed to have that. And, you know, if we need to name each one of those little, those little entrances as streets.
Yeah, we're going to have to name them, because if we come up in for EMS, we need to know, okay, what, which lane essentially there, there it is. Which building is it, you know, building four, apartment A, that, that kind of stuff. We're going to, we're going to need all that.
I had some brief discussion with the assessor, but didn't get very far. And if you've noticed, we did have a name suggested, but that is already in use. So, Scott has a, a list of other names that I will send over to him and we can talk about that and.
The nine one one addressing, if you've got two or more units on that, it becomes a street. And each one has its own address, so in order to have its own address, it has to have a name to go with that street. So, um, so you've got more than two units on this particular, regardless of whether it's a parking lot or whatever, it still is a street per se.
Okay.
Just don't use Lord of the Ring.
Well, you can come up with a theme, I think.
Use, use, use names that are common.
I always like the Colorado kind of themes where you like Sierra.
When you have so many that are already named, it's hard to come up with something that's unique and different.
Come up with a theme.
Yep.
For that. Name as a theme like flowers or.
I think heavy metal groups would be good.
Music groups or something like that.
Talking AC/DC, West Funk? I thought you were talking about like heavy metals, like on the periodic table. Palladium.
Now you're really getting it.
Okay, is, is there a, and this is really to you, there's a, is there a homeless encampment out here someplace?
They're all over the place.
No, no, wrong, wrong location.
Wrong location?
Yeah.
That's good.
Are there any?
Cause my next question is, what are you going to do with that?
Are there any, like, kind of communal or green spaces or anything as part of this design?
Not like specific to like a park or anything like that. You know, just the, the little mail building, which is for a bus stop. But, um, no, nothing identified at this point. There's, there are spaces where, you know, that can be used, can be used as that. We tried to do as, as little as possible of clearing. I know it's a big area when you look at the whole overall thing in order to get everything to fit in there and construct it without, you know, clearing everything.
It's mostly wooded.
Yeah, mostly wooded. Tried to retain most of what was there and some little pockets of wooded, wooded areas within that too.
When you talk about the mail building and the, and the school bus pickup, has anybody actually checked with the school department to see if they would come up here with a school bus? Or if the post office would come up a private road to make deliveries?
As far as I know, they don't come up private roads.
Okay, well, that was a question at the, at the TRT meeting. And if, if it's not possible, we just showed the opportunity for that to be there, if that's, if that was something that could happen. As far as the mail goes, I haven't checked with, you know, the post office, but I know most of these kind of developments require a mail station now. They, they don't come in and do individual deliveries to the, to the units.
Yeah, they'll do that. They'll drive up a private, I live on a private road and we have like a.
Well, it seems like sometimes they do and sometimes they don't.
Yeah, game box, everyone's mail is in the box.
Oh, right, right, right.
It's not that far up, but they'll come up.
So, what happens with, and these are multi-bedroom houses, right? They're not, I mean, they're going to have kids.
Two bedrooms.
So, how are we going to deal with the school kids again?
Well, maybe close to where it meets down East Highway on their property, they could put a bus stop of sorts. I don't know.
Well, the, the whole Eastwood Lane is not, is a right of way. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to see the kids down, down on Route one. Maybe, you know, maybe they, we could work something out with the school.
Yeah.
For the, the, um, the bowling alley road, you know, I just, you know, it would not be a safe place for kids to have to wait.
Yeah, I, I think for, for me, the importance of figuring out with precision where the bus, how the bus would get in there, how it'll be able to turn around and that there's safe walking for children all the way up to that spot. And ideally, we have sidewalks going, you know, connecting as far as possible.
I mean, generally, the school buses don't go up private roads, but I think considering how many units are here, I think it'd be worth having a conversation with the school department to say, you know, show them this and say, you know, would you envision coming up here? And if they did, I think you'd have, have a little better, there's really not much of a turnaround there for the school bus where you have, where you show it. But I, I think it'd be worth having that conversation instead of having however many kids, you know, walk all the way down.
True, true, all the way down. Cause some of those walks are, I mean.
It's a long ways, yeah.
Far for.
And there may be a better place for that to be, you know?
And maybe they're, maybe they're willing to, to make a deal, you know, not to go down every little street to the very end and turn around and come out. But, you know, where it spurs off, stop there or something.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a nice spot in the middle.
So, there's like three or four stops within this, within the division.
Yeah. Does the city own, does the school department control the busing or do they have contracts with somebody else?
The school owns the buses.
Include it whether too, parents are going to want to drive their children. They're not going to want to make them walk when it's so cold or gray. So, you might want to have some area there so people could pull around maybe. I don't know. I'm just thinking a lot.
But getting back to Eastwood Lane, what do you envision, right now it's being plowed or taken care of by Eastwood Lane, the tennis court. But what do you envision, I mean, had, have you had those conversations with the owners to say?
If it doesn't work out, if it doesn't work out, we're going to do it ourselves. Yeah, yes. They're going to maintain the road as if we, that we, it's our own and it, and I always assume I'm going to anyways. And if, if something else works out better, this is going to, it'll be, it'll be fine, but.
Now, what about, I mean, I haven't been up that road.
We're going to have to plow the whole development anyway, so.
Yep. Well, what about like maintenance of the road, paving? Yep, but what about like maintenance of the road, paving, you know, going forward?
I always assume I'm responsible, if, unless we make an agreement with someone else. They're, they're, you know, I can't assume they're gonna offer, and if they don't, then I'm gonna take care of it. There's no, uh, no way I can force them to.
Where do, where do words that, that make that binding forever, does that, do, do those show up on the plan here somewhere?
I would encourage to try and have those conversations first and then you have a agreement.
Yes.
But if that doesn't happen, I'll have to take you up on your offer and put it on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, some kind of a maintenance, maintenance.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And similar, sorry to interrupt, I was just gonna say, similar to the sidewalk issue, depending on the language and the deed on any easement. Um, you know, it may cover access and maintenance of, so you have, you'd able to get access to the property that would include plowing, so. Um, you know, at the very least having the right to do so, clarifying that.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't really understand.
Sorry.
Was it an addition to what you, something different?
No, I was just saying, it's, it's along the same lines, um, if you can have the conversation and have an actual agreement, um, and that you could provide to us, so we have that. Um, but if, short of that, um, the language of whatever easement you have over, you know, right of access over those alternative routes. Um, oftentimes, depending on the language, it clarifies whether or not, you know, you can, basically, you can, if you need to get there, you can get there and thus you have the right to plow. But it'd be better to, so if, if you can't get an agreement, then we'll want some kind of, um, you know, point somewhere that says, I can do this, and then we'll put it on the plan.
Hey, just kind of a, a picky comment, as if the other ones weren't. Uh, on the permit application thing that's in here, on the second page, item number four D, you talked about the kind, the number of units and so forth that are going in. What you do is you just described that there's three unit buildings and, or whatever. And, so what you need to have there is a number, right? Twenty-three of these and twelve of those or whatever.
Yeah, it would, would have been.
Well, that was exist, that's existing.
So like you have twenty-one.
None of the type of units that can be developed. And it says four units slash six unit buildings. And all I'm saying is that there need to be X four unit buildings, Y six unit buildings. Just so it's consistent with the rest.
So I count four hydrants in the entire complex?
Uh, I'm trying to remember if that was where I came up with, um.
That's what I'm seeing here, um, the furthest one I, apart, I can tell is anywhere from four hundred, four hundred and seventy-five feet apart, which is not bad, so.
I didn't add anything through that stretch of right of way, didn't make sense to do that. I don't know if that's something that they would require, where there's no buildings, like I kinda worked backwards from the building, closest building down.
Yeah, well, I don't see here, it may be on the other plan, is the size of the water line to feed those hydrants.
There'd be a six inch.
Six inch, okay.
I'll make the, you done?
Yep.
I'll make the same comment here that I made the last time, is that, you know, there's lots of maps, like this cool thing that shows the, 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 Iverno pools and whatnot. If you could just outline a little bit where the, where your development is on that map as well, so that we can see a, a better visual of.
Okay.
What has to be moved and what are you overlaying and stuff. I mean, I think that, I think the narrative supports that, it would just be nice to have the visual.
Yeah, I think it shows up on the, the three hundred plan.
It may.
But, um, you know, that's a very small scale, I mean, there's not, there's no other way to show it on one map, really, other than that.
The other thing is, well, the next thing is that, uh, in this report by Berman, Berman, uh, about different environmental things. Um, and they made, uh, a fair number of findings, and, well, basically on page nine, they have a whole list of findings and recommendations. And there were some other places in the report as well. Are all those spoken to, or are, or have, you know, when they say, we would recommend this, is that happening? And do we have the ability to enforce that to happen, or, or what? And that's the question actually to you and Steph.
So the, the majority of what is on there for, um, for any type of, um, like vernal pools or.
Heron nesting.
We are, well, not the vernal pools, that, except for that, um, we are significantly far away, far enough away that there is no, there is no need to follow whatever the recommendations were. Because we're beyond that distance. Um, the vernal pool, um, there, there are setbacks and depending on the type of vernal pool, this is not a significant, um, vernal pool. So we can come within a certain distance of it, I tried to keep, um, the offset of that. Uh, that stuff will be pretty much, um, confirmed, I guess, if you will, um, when the DEP has their opportunity to review the project. Because we will have some wetland impact and a couple of crossings of the wetlands.
So, so when they make their finding that'll take care of all this, is that kind of it?
Well, so DEP would be the one to check on those, um, make sure they're following in line with the rec- recommendations and following the vernal pool rules, but.
Okay, and that's a binding sort of review on their part.
What permits did you anticipate having to get from DEP?
This is a full site law permit?
Oh, so you're going through SLOTA.
It, it has to be, it's over three acres of a produce.
I figured as much, so yeah, that, that's the Cadillac of permitting, so it's gonna hit everything, stormwater, natural resource protection, everything, so.
Cool.
Yeah, and they can't start building, they can't get that.
Good enough, good enough.
So.
Especially like if somebody else is in charge of it.
In your stormwater treatment areas, do you have any areas that are gonna be, um, deep pool, deep, deep cutout areas?
No.
None like that at all?
No, um, the only, the only reason we would have that is if it would be required for flooding purposes. And there is, there are some, uh, I guess, exceptions for, for discharge of having to control the peak floods if you're in a certain type of watershed. Um, that's a discussion I have to have in more detail with the engineer from DEP. Uh, but most of these at, at this point are anticipated to be, um, like filter basins, so they, they don't hold any water. In fact, they're, they're supposed to drain within, I believe, twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Actually, they're supposed to drain between twenty-four and forty-eight hours, they're supposed to not drain quicker than that.
Alright.
I got more.
Oh, I figured you did.
Okay, go on, moving on to traffic, my favorite area, uh, let's see, um, let's see here. I guess, I mean, it was, and it was basically kinda okay. Um, my question is, you know, you talk about, are they C-WALL, SuWALL, SuWALL?
Yeah.
SuWALL, SuWALL, SuWALL.
You got it.
Yeah, good, thanks, pre-syll, pass for mayor. Um, you know, they did, they do some stuff with level service and so forth, but I didn't see anything about the level of service of Eastward, Eastward Lane as it intersects with Route One. Specifically the right and left turn out of the development, okay? So there needs to be some, something about that, okay? What those levels of service are and so forth. Um, the PM probably is not a problem, because there's only two left turns out in the PM period, but the fourteen, you know, and I'm not, I don't think that the, the level of service on Route One is gonna be, um, compromised at all. But what happens on SuWALL, on, I'm sorry, on SuWALL though, on Eastward Lane may well be, okay? Um, so you did that, on the, um, the accident analysis, oh, the, where you looked at this.
Sorry, what page is that?
This stuff?
Yeah.
Um, that's back, back row.
You worked with Diane.
More reading, yes.
The, um, I guess the thing here is that, you know, I look at the, the crash diagram, who did who, when, sort of thing, right? And one of the problems is that there's six or so that, that, you know, occur right at the intersection and, and whatever. Cause not all the ones that are shown there really have any bearing on your development. In other words, they're in this link, okay? But they're, but only the ones that are right here, cause a couple of these are presumably left turns out of, uh, finalities. Well, you know, that's, you can't do anything about that. But anything that goes into or out of Resort Way is, is kinda like fair grain, game. Problem is that, um, there are at least six that are related right to, uh, Resort Way, okay? Uh, and that's over a two-year period, so it's not necessarily a big deal. But the problem is that the traffic on Resort Way is gonna be significantly increased as a result of this, okay?
Do you mean Eastward Lane?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yes.
Uh, it's called Resort here, same difference?
Different road. No.
No.
There's actually, I think, one problem with, with that diagram.
Where's Eastwood here?
That, no, it's not on, it's on there. What you're looking at is between High Street, Slip Lanes and Short Street.
Yeah.
Which is the highest crash, like, and had twenty crashes or the.
Right.
Crash of one point six zero.
This is probably like VIP.
What it doesn't take into account, excuse me, doesn't take into account the crashes between Short Street and Meyer Street, which is where Eastward Lane is.
Okay.
So I think what we need is another crash diagram.
Another link between the two, yeah.
To cover that between Short Street and Meyer Street, which has twelve crashes, which, which is where Eastward Lane is.
And here are these nodes right here.
And this report's for a hundred and forty-two units?
Yeah, that was originally what we had proposed in the sketch plan.
So what is this proposal for?
A hundred and sixteen.
So, I mean, that's, I mean, it would be lower, but if you.
Right, yeah, there, she did, um, we, I did ask her to update a letter and the.
Get that in here.
Trip generation, it's, it's, uh, probably in front of that.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Or did, that letter from Diane, oh, cause this, this study was done last year when they were anticipating a hundred and forty-two units and now they're down to one sixteen. But I think I did see that, that was a supplement, right?
Well, and it's, and it's, and, and the.
So it's fewer trips.
It's fewer, right, so, so whatever it was, it's less.
Yeah.
But, back to the crashes, okay? I don't, I have no idea, as it turns out, what the crashes are at, uh, Eastward Lane and Down East Highway, okay? And I suspect it's probably something on the order of what we see at Resort Lane, okay? And the question becomes, what happens when we multiply the traffic on the intersecting road by five, six, eight, ten, okay? And if we were getting a half a dozen crashes, if it's similar, uh, under current conditions, what happens when we triple or quadruple the outbound and inbound traffic? So, so the point is that, that, that the crash stuff needs to be looked at in more detail. And there has to be some sort of, to be sure, a guesstimate about, you know, what might be, based on what's going on here, uh, the crash history going forward, okay? Which may or may not, you know, call for, and I'm not exactly sure what, what the result, what the remedy would even be on US One. Um, one would be a traffic signal, which I doubt that they're very happy about. Um, but that would be one, that if, if, if the crashes were high, the distance is probably, from the adjacent signals, is probably enough that you could probably step one in there. I'm sure that the state would not like to do that, but it needs to be brought out, is the point, okay? But yeah, but, yeah, I'm sorry that I missed the fact that the road is outside the boundaries of the, uh, of, of what the crash report says. So the crash report, basically, is too long.
Is D O T gonna have a scoping meeting on this project?
Oh, interestingly, I don't, I don't know how that works with a, with a right of way that, yeah.
I don't think they are, but I'll reach out to them, I have a meeting with them next week for a different project.
Well, the other thing, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, AlRig stuck their feet in the water for this.
Right.
Do they have to take into account AlRig's trips, estimated trips, as they consider this?
To be honest, their development isn't really impacted by AlRig necessarily, but AlRig is definitely impacted by their development. If that makes sense, I mean, I'm not sure who has to take into account whom first, but. Their, this development will be sending traffic Down East, Down East Highway towards AlRig's development, whereas AlRig's traffic is either existing. I, I mean, maybe someone's gonna leave their house just to go to the. This coffee shop, yeah.
Right, sorry, okay.
But then now.
Is, is Sebago still takes care of our traffic lights?
I believe so.
I mean, is the city gonna have Sebago take a look at their traffic figures to see if any updating needs to be made to the, the sequencing? Because you have that specific language in, in the ordinance that covers the synchronized lights.
Yes, I mean, that's something Jason does regularly, where if, as more development comes in and more, the counts get higher and higher, that he can, gets a weekly report on. Um, he has conversations with them to figure out the best signaling, or timing for the signals.
What I'm getting at, though, is, 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 because of this development or AlRig or a combination of both, if there's additional cost to the city, it's going by the developers. And I guess it's, can be up to Jason or somebody to figure out, you know, is it six of one, have done another, or they ten, two, or, you know.
Are there impact fees, aren't there, that the city has already been addressing?
Primary and diverted ends.
Right.
Uh, peak hour Saturday, I need to know how many.
Cause there, there are no diverted, is what, uh, yeah, Diane was telling me, um, she did adjust the primary and it's in that new letter.
I'm sorry.
So they would be included in the Beckwith Hill impact fee zone? But I think the, you know, the, the traffic lights in this area need to be closely.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll, something I'll bring up at the scoping meeting next week and see how D O T wants to proceed with it. Because I'm not sure that, again, I don't know what they're gonna say about that project, the AlRig project in particular. So if they change their whole plan, that would have an impact on this also.
Oh, yeah, cause back and forth, right, because, because these, all these trips out of, in and out of this development are new.
Right.
Most of the AlRig trips are passive by.
And those in her, on page five in the safety analysis action review down at the bottom, the kind of like a comment, as a result, access management is recommended as parcels redeveloped along this corridor to minimize curb cuts. Increase drive spacing, et cetera, reduce accident potential. I think that's a good conversation to have with D O T in your scoping meetings. Uh, sometimes D O T is too gung ho on, uh, closing curb cuts that are there now. But I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, you know, between the two developments. If, something can be done to address, you know, this area to help out on the safety.
Does the Eastwood Lane, is it officially a loop? I think the right of way that he has is the straight section, but is the rest of that actually a private driveway, or is there?
I don't know.
Cause it does loop around, so if.
Yeah, that's private too, that, the road that comes out by DHS building, that's a private road also. I'm not sure who owns that, if the original owner of the bowling alley owned that, but I wonder who actually owns it now.
So is Eastward private all the way up to the street?
Yes, Eastward Lane, yeah.
Okay. You still have all kinds of tabs there.
No, I went, I went through them all.
No, just each one.
Some of them were already done. I was wondering what you felt about, on page four, on the turning movement, on the level of service. Obviously, with cars, yeah, I mean, obviously cars, it's actually south on Route 1. I mean, this has east and west, it kind of runs east and west, but officially it's going south. But, so, northbound, southbound traffic on Route 1 is, you know, sufficient right turning into it. I just kind of question, heading towards Hancock, as you're waiting to take a left into the, into the Eastward Lane, I mean, it's rated as Level A, with very little delay making that left turn across two lanes of traffic that are coming in and out.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a switch in there that basically talks about whether there could be gaps in the traffic the other way and so forth. And that can, that can really help out turns and so forth. In other words, if there's gaps at the, that come from a light upstream, you can get, you know, the, the turning vehicles can, can make the turn.
But their, their timing here, making left turns into Eastward Lane, 1.3 seconds, less than a second?
On average.
Okay.
No, 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 well, no, it, it is, I mean, it's, you know, it's not much. I mean, and, and I'm not surprised, because the volumes are not all that high. You know, and the, and the thing is that they have gone, gone in the, in the, quote, right direction. But, you know, so you see southward, southbound Eastward Lane, which you would expect to see the most impact, has the most impact, it's just not enough to flick it over into the Level Service B or wherever.
Yeah.
I think, I think the crashes are probably more important than, than the level of service and the level of incident. That being said, that being said, is there still going to be a connection to the other proposals, proposed stuff, or is this going to be it now?
I think that now, I think you're talking about Resort Way, the connection to Resort Way. Now I think there's like land in between this property and connecting to that.
So, so they won't be connecting through this? In other words, there's no cars, are they going to be coming through this onto Eastward from some other road?
Right.
Okay.
Are all these rental units?
Yes.
Do you have any handicap apartments?
No.
One and two, I think.
That's it?
Because of that firewall separation.
With the firewall separation?
We did our research, didn't we?
See the other ones here? Here, this one goes on. This one does rock. This guy here. He's still... It's always a left turn. I'm done.
Disappointed?
So much pressure. Well, I think, I think this is quite a, I mean, there's quite a list of stuff here to, to deal with, and it all needs to be dealt with effectively. And can, can we review, or can you get, like, if, if the crash thing comes in, you know, if they redo the crash thing, are we allowed to see that before the final plan is actually submitted, or?
Yeah, I mean, I just have to put it in a public file.
What's that?
Have to just put it in a public file, too. But it's, I mean, you can see it, but it's not technically under review until they turn in their application.
Well, it might be useful to see it if we possibly can, or at least one of us.
All of you have to see it.
Others may not care as much.
They still get the chance.
Any other questions from the board?
Diane?
No, I mean, there's a number of things that have to get updated for the plan, like for final. I just want to know, maybe a little bit of explanation from how the applicant on just financial capacity, what the strategy is, and how we're going to look at the final.
I did, we did talk about that. Scott did provide a letter to me from his accountant, and I can email that to you. It's, it's a bit out from the actual construction, they don't anticipate having anything start until next year, so the exact numbers aren't there, but, you know, he's been working with a number of banks for a number of different projects, so don't foresee any issues.
And I think, just extending just a little bit, like John was touching on before, you know, all of a sudden, there's a, there's a bunch of development going in along here, right? And, you know, NAMGOT really needs to think about this as opposed to just say, oh, this one's approved, that one's approved, whatever. Because, you know, stuff that happens here now is going to be there for quite some time. So if we're screwing things up somehow, we need to act quickly to, or, you know, proactively...
Proactively, prudently.
Prudently and proactively to get it squared away. And that, and that's, and that's more than just one individual development, obviously.
Right.
Because that's one of the real problems with looking at them one by one, because you say, well, this one has no, no impact, and it's legitimate, and this one has no impact, and it's legitimate. But you start aggregating them over two or three new developments, and all of a sudden there is an impact. And it was like, nobody's fault. Anyway.
I mean, is this, I forget the name, the big grant that the city is working with D O T on. Is this an area, I mean, depending on, you know, you're talking about sidewalks and access, and is that something that, that N B R T grant will possibly...
Not, not this area specifically. Our conversations with D O T, this area would probably require its own project separate of the Village Partnership Initiative.
Village Partnership.
That's going to focus more on the Village Center, which is like the downtown and the residential streets that branch off of Main Street, not quite High Street or anything that comes off of that.
How does this tie in with the state? I mean, the state just did a thing where they invited comments on their long-term highway safety plan. Do you have any idea about how the other stuff that we're doing dealt with that, or is that just a completely separate thing? Because, because my point being that there's a whole bunch of stuff about, you know, zero crashes and complete streets and all that stuff. And it strikes me that this whole High Street corridor and, and Down East Highway and so forth is just primed to do something. And, you know, if you don't do, and it's by the same joke, if you don't do something now, you're never going to do something, because it's, you're going to be locked in. You may be locked in already. But my, my question was that, you know, is, is the city interacting with, with the state relative to that safety plan that they're taking comments on as we speak?
Not specifically in that regard, given comment on that plan, but we're just talking about, again, like, a separate project for specifically this High Street corridor.
And that, and that could be changing up the right-of-way and lane reconfiguration and the whole nine yards, or?
No details yet, it'll be probably getting a study done first, and then seeing what the study says.
Okay.
I mean, is, both sides, I mean, looked at whether there's any public-private relationships that, that the city can help out on this development, whether there be CBD grants or any type of, you know?
I'll take volunteers to help with that.
Well, we have an economic development right now. I mean, sometimes there are public assistance, one regards or another. I mean, obviously, that's not our forte, but...
No, I mean, that sort, those sort of conversations are happening around other developments, so if it was a possibility for this one, the conversation would have occurred.
I mean, obviously, what the city needs a lot of is affordable housing, and I think that is certainly going to be a step in the, in the right direction.
Well, be affordable for somebody at least.
Right.
Everybody's, affordable's different.
It's all relative. Well, I open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to make any comments or questions about this project? Anybody on Zoom, Nate?
Nobody with their hand ready.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing. I guess from my point of view, I mean, I think there's, I think there's still a lot of information that needs to be provided. I'd be, I'd be hesitant to consider the application, I don't want the application complete. Obviously, it's up to the board, but...
And we'll note that a lot of the notes on the TRT point out that a lot of the missing things are for final specifically. Preliminary is a bit of a lower bar.
What do you think, Matt?
I mean, if, I mean, at this point, you don't even know if they're going to have access to water in sewer, it seems.
Well, we know they'll have access, it's a matter of whether or not it's private or public.
Yeah, but if it's private, they say no.
No, we'll go through the road with it. We have, I think we have right-of-ways, we can get water in sewer. It's whether we hook on to someone else that's already there, or do our own from, from, from start to finish.
True.
You know, it will happen one way or the other.
I guess I'm, I'm, and had never been clear in terms of where the line is between having too many things that are left to be decided and, you know, whether or not they made a start. I mean, you know, if, if you say, gee, we're going to look at, I mean, and you did a better job than this, but, you know, if we're going to, we're going to look at traffic, and we look, we did some traffic counts, and you can argue that that's the start, right? And so, is something like that really a pretty rudimentary start or recognition? Is that enough for it to be complete at this point?
For traffic in particular, a traffic study completed like this is not required for preliminary, so that's more information than...
Oh, right, no, 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 I, I, yeah, but I was just using it as an example. No, I think that this, for this point, I think this traffic analysis is, is fine, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I can go through the list, you know, the lighting plan are usually fairly simple, and they take time, but they're not complicated, you just make sure your foot handles match.
But, but, okay, so taking that, though, but my point is that should we have at least a rudimentary lighting plan at this point that we can comment upon before it goes to final? Because it doesn't seem to be anything about that, for example.
Um, I don't remember if it was in the...
So I meant, my, I guess my question is, using that again as an example, how much is, how much is enough to make it acceptable at this point? The lighting plan would seem to be totally missing. So does that make it incomplete?
As well as the firewall.
What's that?
As well as the firewall plans?
That detail.
Or the high challenge, right?
Well, so the, the note on that was, so there's two notes for the firewall, the preliminary note, is that we need to know if they are using the high-challenge firewall or not, and the full engineered design is for final.
Matt, what do you think?
I mean, I think that most of the information is here that would be, we needed to make a decision. I mean, like, again, the lighting plan is missing, but we had a discussion about that, and I thought that, you know, in turn, in turn of like, whether it's for public safety or not, lighting is somewhat important, but it's going to have lighting. The point of the lighting plan is for whether or not it's going to bleed onto somebody else's property.
Sure.
Which isn't really about public safety for...
What, what about the layout of the property when we really don't have the proper T-turns or turnarounds for fire trucks at the end of driveways? Isn't that part of the preliminary, or is that part of final?
It's part of preliminary, but it...
It can be, it can be corrected.
It can be corrected, right.
And come in at final.
And there is something there.
So that would, if that's the case, then that would be, have to be part of a motion, that that would be part, that that would have to be there. Because if it's not in the final...
Right.
It isn't going to get voted on.
Well, correct. And so that's up to developer to make sure that is there.
My, my two senses, there's enough here that we could find it satisfying, you know, complete.
Kind of preliminary completeness.
I mean, that's the, you know, it's preliminary review, that's the point. And they now had our comments and the staff's comments, and they know what's expected of them. They came, you know, they came for sketch plan before, which isn't necessary. So my two senses, there's enough here, considering our conversation, that rather than have them come back and do another preliminary plan and then come back for a final, you know, it's their risk if they don't have everything and they come back here and then we deny it for lack of completeness.
And the checklist going forward between here and the next one is implicit in what we've, or actually, it's explicit if you follow up on all those things, right? And I don't think that we have to call everything out in the motion, is my point.
No, if it's discussed here and it is a requirement in ordinance, which a lot of what you've discussed is, then it has to be in the final.
Yeah, the final's where we would, if we needed to, we would get kind of into the specifics of the conditions, in my opinion.
Right, yeah, so, so, so if the lighting plan was, was crappy?
Yeah, yeah, we could say, maybe we could just say, will we deny it because you gave us a crappy lighting plan, or...
That's a technical term.
Exactly. Or we'll prove it, subject to you improving this crappy lighting plan.
To me, it sounds like what you're saying is that it's incumbent upon staff to make sure it is fully completed at the final before it even comes to this table.
Well, I think yes and no. I mean, it's, I think staff has done a good job communicating with the applicant what's expected. We've told them, they get to submit a final plan, if there's something glaringly missing, yes, the staff could hold it, but...
And it's their right to submit whatever they want, you know?
Yeah, and then ultimately, it's our decision to say...
I mean, you can tell them everything you can tell them, and if they decide, if they don't want to answer that, then they do that at their own risk.
And as a general comment, you know, the process says, like, I can tell an applicant that their application isn't complete, and take it off the agenda, but the timeline between me being able to get the plans and then make that decision before posting the agenda is very short, and I usually don't have the time to thoroughly look at it to make that determination. But I believe this plan in particular has provided enough information for preliminary.
All that being said, I'll make a motion to accept a preliminary plan review of a major use site plan, a major subdivision plan titled WL Properties LLC, I'm ready to run, right? Yeah, LLC for applicant owner, WL Properties LLC, has to be complete as a preliminary subdivision.
Second.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
There is a long list there, though.
I know, there's a lot of work to do.
That's the cautionary note.
Still a lot of work to do.
Yeah, right.
They have a no-vote class. The fact that they didn't even know what a high-challenge firewall was, that concern...
Thank you. Good to see you.
Because that actually, that's actually what divides those into one and two family dwellings. If they can't divide them into one and two family dwellings, then they have to provide ADA apartments.
Say that again?
If they can't, if they can't divide those into one and two family dwellings and they become apartments, then they have to provide a handicap apartment.
Yes, handicap apartments and parking.
Yeah, so.
So, and handicap apartments somewhere in the, somewhere in the, uh...
Yeah, usually on the...
So that, that, the high, the high-challenge firewall is what separates all those units into one and two family dwellings.
Okay.
So it not only, it not only changes the demographic of the building for, for that, but it also helps the fire protection.
Sure, okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I did reset the invite.
There's a lot to it, I mean, it's not just, yeah, not just the two-hour firewall separation one. Absolutely. I thought so.
Maybe one of these, right?
Yeah.
Maybe these have changes in them.
Let's see if these guys change the names of their streams. I cannot believe... How many free have we used on this project?
Supporting the main paper, supporting the main...
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're using them for, yeah.
They're, they're, they're the consultant. And now, with the... And now, was it Arbor? Has it always been Arbor Property?
Keep that one for now.
Matt?
Has it always been Arbor House Property? Has it had a new name?
Ye- yes, it has been.
Yeah. It has been, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I wasn't even there, though. I do, I did, but... I wanna get to the...
It's okay, you ready?
No.
You're the boss. You're the one that takes the lead.
You wanna get to the map you want?
I'm trying.
Okay, so we'll move on to number five. Final plan review of Phase One, a major use site plan entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. Proposal is three to seventeen lot, major subdivision. Phase One of the project will consist of four dwelling units and construction of the first section of Old Mill Way and Daylil Way. Subject property is an approximately 29.9 acre parcel located at 30 Old Mill Road, Act 41, Lot 53, in the limited residential neighborhood and urban zoning districts. Who's here, runs on the app? Uh, Tim Stone. And who we have on?
Yeah, my name is Zach Graham, civil engineer for this project. Along with Tracy Daniels, who knows her stamp on this. She had a family emergency and isn't able to make it tonight, but I'll come for her. Just to clarify, so you don't, because you don't see my stamp on the papers.
I think you're gonna wanna look.
Do you have a stamp?
Is that gonna bleed off, or Tim, or...
I can lead off unless you want to, Tim?
Uh, go for it.
All right. Um, well, number one, appreciate y'all, um, meeting with us. I know you've seen this project a few times. Hopefully, if we have the road names, uh, these road names have been approved by the, um, by the, uh, appraiser. And so you don't have to worry about any references to Lord of the Rings anymore.
Thank you very much.
Perfect.
That said, just a few, a few things on this. We, we, since we last met with you all, we have met with the DEP. And just wanna point out that the overall project as a whole is not applicable for this, for site law because it's both less than three acres in the impervious and less than twenty developable acres. We're coming tonight for just Phase One because, um, as, if you'll remember, previously there were some potential vernal pools on the property. Those were able to just be reviewed from a timing standpoint in the last couple of weeks. They were determined not to be, um, vernal pools. However, we still need, well, now that we have that determination, we need to work through a wetlands permit and a stormwater permit with the DEP for Phases Two through Four. We're able to come to you on Phase One because we're less than an acre of impervious area and so we're exempt from the DEP on that one. Now, they will, they will review Phase One. They've already actually looked at it, but it is at risk at this point. But they have looked at it and, you know, generally verbally, uh, from a stormwater perspective, approved that. There are overall some modifications. Well, and let me point out that the sheets on the cover sheet that are highlighted, those are left out just because they're part of the future phase, uh, the future phases. However, in the index sheets, you can see all the phases. Generally, um, you know, substantially what's seen here is what you've seen before. In, in particular with Phase One that we're proceeding with. The main change there, Daylil is the same and the lot layout's the same there. The main change is that due to some ledges on the northeast side of what will be Old Mill Way, um, that routing and, and everything was re... I guess once the snow lifted and we figured out the ledges and some of the geotechnical issues, um, we rerouted that roadway into the lot layout. And so Lot 15 is now being incorporated into Phase One with direct access to Old Mill Way. The, um, one thing that we are asking with this is, or is that the capacity letters from the Water and Sewer Department came in after the formal submittal. And so we're asking for just a separate vote that those do be included with the overall package. And there is sufficient capacity for water and sewer, not just for Phase One, but for the whole thing. And then, um, uh, the, the other thing we're requesting on the Phase One approval for Old Mill Way is really a deferral on the paving. And, and that is with the expectation of future development down the way. We don't wanna tear up that pavement with construction traffic in the future. We'd like to defer paving that section of road until after, or until the, you know, near the end of construction with that. The, um, and that's, I think, my summary, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, let me ask a question about the paving waiver and the way we're proceeding now. Because we're here just to do Phase One.
Right.
So, um, the paving, some paving is based on average daily trips.
Right.
So if we're not dealing with the rest of the downstream, upstream property, does it technically need a paving waiver? Because you don't have the trips.
Right, it was more just to make sure that the board was aware that they would like to have it deferred until the full ADT is like, uh, were added to that road, which is what was required to be paved in the first place. So just putting you on notice that it's a request and that you can grant that request. I don't know if it's technically a waiver, but...
Because, I mean, technically, we're just dealing with Phase One.
Right, well, so then it would be a waiver still. It's just you're waiving the paving only. Normally, if it's a private residential road, which that Old Mill Way is, you can waive it for ADT less than 50, which Phase One has. So it is a waiver, but they're not asking for a complete waiver. They're asking for a temporary waiver, just to have it waived until the necessary ADT is added to then have to pave it.
And that's being proactive. I mean, that's, that's the goodness, right?
Because then they have to pave it twice.
But the thing is, I mean, you really need a, the second waiver because we're not dealing with Phase Two, Three, and Four.
Well, so even if it were just Phase One, you would have to grant a waiver because it is a private residential road with less than 50 ADT. All new roads have to be paved, but there are certain conditions that the planning board can grant a waiver. And that would be one of those conditions. But they're not asking for a complete waiver. They're asking for a deferral for the requirements to pave in the future.
Is there a timeframe involved in this default?
Yes. Zach, do you just wanna explain the timeline?
I mean, is appropriate for us to...
Generally, we're requesting, oh, yeah. I think generally, we're requesting a, a, a waiver. And it, really, the purpose is for that future development. So we have to come back to you for Phase Two through Four approval. And at, I mean, at that point, if you approve Phase Two through Four, my suggestion would be that, that that would be when a timeframe is worked out on the paving of that. Because that'll, at that point, we'll know, uh, we'll have our stormwater, our wetlands permit, and we'll know when we're gonna be able to build out the remainder of the development. And, and really, again, the request has to do more with, it's not that we don't wanna pave it, it's we just don't wanna tear it up during construction with any construction traffic. And we'd like to come back at, at the end and do that.
So, so I'll...
Now, what I, oh, I'm sorry. What I would suggest, let's say, because we have Phase Two, Three, and Four, let's say, um, you know, I would recommend, hey, we're saying we're gonna build this out over the summer twenty, or Phase Two through Four over, for example, the summer of '24 and '25. Let's say that doesn't happen. My recommendation, you know, put a trigger on it of, hey, this gets delayed. It's gonna get, you know, construction gets delayed for future phases for whatever reason. Put a, you know, put some kind of a reasonable timeframe on it so the owner has, you know, come back and pave it.
So, I mean, my, I worry if you put a measurement on it, by the time that there, there's enough dwelling and it's on the property to re, or exceed that 50 ADT, is when they have to pave it. If they're not, my presumption is that...
Yeah.
So Phase One's complete, you'll be renting those out. But then will that renting stop while the construction of Phase Two, Three, and Four are ongoing?
Uh, we haven't completely figured that out. I mean, it's a lot of noise, especially if we hit a lot of ledge. So our main concern with the paving is we just wanna keep it as far down the road as possible because it's just gonna get destroyed.
Oh, my thought is, like, there may be a point where you reach that 51 ADT and renting those out, but then the construction is still ongoing.
I think that's a possibility. We're renting them out and construction is still ongoing.
So, I think, because the waiver can only apply for paving if it's less than 50 ADT. So going over that would then trigger the requirement to pave.
Why can't we approve the other phases now?
Um, because, or, sorry, you wanna go, Zach, or...
Yeah, either, yeah, I can go. We need, we need DEP wetlands permit and stormwater pit permit for the future phases. We couldn't proceed with wetlands permitting until the vernal pool issue was resolved. And it was just resolved in the last couple of weeks. And so we wanted to move forwards to not miss this construction season for Phase One this year. And so we'll be coming back for the future phases after permitting.
Does our ordinance require those?
My reasoning is different. Because there's, the rock bridge was, um, an issue on the site visit. And there was not, um, a determination or engineering of whether or not it could handle a fire truck and emergency access going over it. So any parts of the development that require access via that bridge can't be built out or approved until we have more information on that.
So that's the reasoning, it's not actually the...
No, they, for the state premise, they just have to have applied for them for final.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That would only be Phase Four, though.
I was gonna say, isn't the rock bridge?
Yeah, the rock bridge is Phase Four.
Well, and the rock bridge is not really a bridge, right? As I remember, it was a pile, a pile of rocks.
A pile of rocks. An abutment, whatever you wanna call it.
They're just abutment, they're just rock abutments at this point. And we need an evaluation for this structural. We stopped to work through that design. So Matt's absolutely correct, that's part of it. And, but frankly, with the vernal pool stuff in a couple of weeks, we couldn't have gotten a permit together with just the unknowns of the design changes between now and, and wanting to make this meeting.
Did, so you haven't submitted that vernal, that permit application yet?
No, we have not.
So that's the, okay.
Another question I had, and I can't find that letter, but there was a letter to Lori about a waiver dealing with, I believe, the stormwater exiting the property into the river. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, yeah, what, what we asked for was, was a waiver. And, and actually, we talked to the DEP about this as well. So what it is, is a waiver to not have to detain stormwater because of the proximity to the river. And so, essentially, and that's, and the DEP promotes this when you're at the bottom of a basin, there's no sense to detain it. So really, the stormwater plan is for all the water quality treatment, but no stormwater detention.
I guess the point I was getting at was, was addressed to Lori. But in reading the, the ordinance, the administrator is the one who makes the decision. And in this case, the administrator would be the planning board, if I understand the ordinance correctly.
Take it.
Yes, that's what it'd be, just, I mean, I suggest the condition to, if you do, do move forward with approval, is to have the letter edited to be addressed to the planning board.
Because actually, the, the letter for Lori on the paving waiver is, says, "Old Mill Property Development exception to Elser Flooding Standard Request." So I think somebody has got the heading on the flooding standard request on the paving waiver letter.
I think they're just making confusion with the, throughout TRT, the city just recently adopted new floodplain ordinance standards. And there was a discussion about that. So I think there may have just been confusion as to who is in charge of that waiver request. Because Lori oversees the floodplain ordinance. But the waiver would still come from the planning board.
Correct. So I just wanna make sure you're... We would need that waiver for Phase One. Would you need that waiver for Phase One?
Yes, we would.
Yeah. Phase One wouldn't put us in a...
No, but so if we rented that out, like, Phase Four would be constructed.
What? Okay.
So, I got a question. So is, um, you have, is one proposed treehouse in Phase One?
That's correct, yes, on Lot 15.
Well, one thing I was gonna ask. Sorry about that, right? In the past, you mentioned, I mean, we talked about short-term rentals. But in kind of the revision, you talk about short-term rentals, maybe up to 30 days, but maybe more in winter seasons.
I don't believe we said that, more than 30 days.
I don't remember that. But these are dwelling units, completely dwelling units, so...
Our intention is not to make them long-term in any way. I mean, from the city's standpoint, I mean, there's no differences for how long they rent them.
Well, these are all, it's coming as a single-family home subdivision, so...
Yeah. We, but the city doesn't regulate short-term rentals.
No.
Yet.
Yeah, I see, basically, it looks like one underground fire protection water supply cistern. Am I looking at that correct?
Uh, well, yes, one for Phase One, that's correct.
One for Phase One, correct.
So each, each phase has one 10,000 gallon cistern, or?
Yeah, that's what, yeah. I'm only seeing one in there, yeah.
That's correct, yeah, the one on sheet, um, sorry.
I got C zero.
Sheet three eleven. You can see the detail for that 10,000 gallon cistern.
Okay.
Just, yeah. Or you can see where it's located, and then the details located on sheet C403.
Now, yeah, now, are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm cool.
You sure?
Am I sure about what?
Let me go now.
You...
I'm not sure.
Go ahead, break yourself out. Um, I, just a comment on the traffic stop, of course. Thank you so much for doing it, first of all. I, I appreciate that. The city, even though they may not know it, appreciates that, too. Just a couple of comments, and these are really for the record to the city as much as they are, well, not to the city, as opposed to you guys, actually. And that is that, you know, this, first of all, well, this part is for you as well. First of all, the, the marginal impact of this development on the operation of North Street Shore in US, or 1A, is really minimal. That's, so, so you've proven that, okay? And I'm not terribly surprised, okay? That doesn't necessarily mean that intersection is still in good shape. And indeed, the analysis they did really showed that, okay? And I would just add, well, first of all, on page eight of the traffic analysis, it says, "No intersection deficiency can be considered correctable with apparent." And my question is, what were you considering to be an intersection deficiency? Because, you know, if it's just in the design of the intersection, like, you know, this lane goes here, whatever, I would tend to agree, okay? If you're talking about potential signalization as a intersection deficiency correction, then, then a signal in fact would make a huge difference, okay? And I would go one further in terms of their accident analysis. And again, thank you. And I would go one further in terms of their accident analysis, and again, thank you for doing that. Um, there were, in the study, assuming I got the right intersection this time, uh, but it seems pretty clear that this is the right one. Um, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten accidents, okay? Um, and some of those are really not so much, uh, you know, function of the intersection, really. But there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them, okay, that are correctable with the traffic signal, okay? So, the point being that if they had a traffic signal within their functioning, those accidents, maybe somebody else's accidents would occur, but those accidents would not have occurred because they were all, you know, some sort of inter- intersection of cars on this road versus that road. And you separate those movements, and that, and those are correctable accidents. The other thing is that the MDOT typically says, oh, wow, there'll be intercept, there'll be cra- new crashes at the end of the queues for a traffic signal, okay? And that's absolutely correct, and there, there, there could be, okay? And those would only be on One A, though, they wouldn't be really on the other two, because One A, uh, the, the side streets are already stop-controlled. So, but the, the neat thing about this particular site is that downstream, i.e. at Forest Avenue, you basically have a very similar situation, you know, it's the first traffic signal after a long stretch with no traffic signals, okay? So you have Forest, and all you're doing is moving that particular thing upstream a little bit, uh, from Forest to, to North slash Shore, okay? So, in terms of trying to predict how many rear-end collisions there may well be, if you put in a new traffic signal, Forest provides a reasonable model for that, okay? Not the model in the end, necessarily, because it's a different, you know, some stuff is different. But it clearly provides a model for how many rear-end crashes there'll be. And one of the things that MDOT has said is that the propensity for rear-end crashes outweigh somehow or another, uh, fixing these other crashes, okay? And so if the Forest, at the end of the Forest Avenue queues, there's been fifty-three accidents, then, well, okay, then they got it right. And if there's two accidents, eh, maybe they didn't get it so right. So, so my point is that this provides a lot of information, a lot of support, I think, for, um, for a traffic signal at that particular intersection, which will help your development, but again, the, the impact that your development, either now or in the future with the, with complete build-out, pretty marginal, so. That's what I have to say, for the record. It's almost like I thought about that beforehand, isn't it?
We're all, we're all students sitting here, listen to the professor. As long as it doesn't give a test.
You good?
I took notes, actually.
Good, pass those along.
Any other questions?
I'm done, no, I got, I, I, no, I thought the thing was pretty, pretty complete, and, you know. Other people have their pet things to take care of, I'm good to go.
Any questions, Molly?
I don't think so.
Staff?
Um, no questions, but we'll comment. City staff and developers left a meet to discuss the future of the public portion of Old Mill Way. Um, but for Phase One, the ADT doesn't make a difference, so. That conversation will happen prior to any future phases coming to...
So do we have to grant a waiver, um, before you do the actual passage of the, of the thing here, the old thing?
You can add the waiver to your vote.
No, it's conditional.
Or you just put it all on with a condition that's built right in?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna say that.
Pretty much, the city and the developer are still working on combining forces on...
Right, so the public portion. Yes, so prior to future phases coming to plan, we'll have had this discussion, um, and hopefully resolution for you.
And I certainly do applaud the developer for engaging in the conversation with the city. I appreciate it.
And just for the record, I liked the Lord of the Ring names.
Yes.
Yeah, apparently ninety-one wanted to like them, I appreciate it.
You know, it'd be funny saying it, though.
It would be, exactly.
Well, I, I'll, I'll just continue what I said to the last group, I think heavy metal bands should be the models, but... That pale and painful dead side.
Public hearing, please.
Public hearing. I know we got a couple of people in the back that are concerned about this, any comments or questions?
I got a question.
We've come up to here. Please state your name for the record, please.
Bruce Kaminsky, I'm the closest to butter on Old Mill Road, you guys all know that by now. Just, uh, the vocabulary here, you were talking about pavement, what does pavement mean? You were talking about the pavement for Phase One and the rest of the project, and in my mind, pavement says asphalt. Am I wrong in making that connection? Or, or has there been a change here?
No, it's, uh, will be asphalt.
So, so this project will eventually have asphalt paving throughout?
For a section of the road, yes, not throughout, but for a section of the road.
Okay, let's get closer to it. Am I gonna have pavement in front of my house?
That'll go to the comment I made that, for Phase One, no, but for any future phase, the developer and city will have met, made a decision on how that part of the road will likely be paved, but how it happens is, discussion is still has to happen.
So, through Phase One, we're, I'm still having gravel in front of the house?
Yes.
We get to Phase Two, and if they proceed past One and into Two, it's gonna be asphalt?
Very likely.
Very likely. Oh, this is, okay, okay, all right, uh...
You went to law school.
And, um, and from your lips to God's ears, uh, you know, a traffic light? I mean, I know you said it here, but is it gonna bubble up, or is it just dying here?
You're gonna vote my K grade? Can you answer that question? You know, it's kind, I mean, if you want to comment, I mean, it's, 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 you know, it's come up a number of times, okay? And, and MDOT is kind of apparently loath to put a traffic light in them on their own. Uh, I think they've said, told the city that they could do it on, on their dime if they want to.
Quite a dime.
Quite a dime.
Quite a dime, several dimes.
Yeah, several dimes, but this is a very expensive thing, because the railroad tracks really, you know, muck it up and all that.
Right now, so, that is a very good summary, thank you. So right now, I think on North Street, DOT is putting in some type of blinking light to alert people to the upcoming intersection, hoping that it'll slow people down, they'll be more cautious as they approach. But in terms to an actual signalized, uh, intersection, DOT has been, again, loath to help with that in any sort of way, so it'd be completely on the city's expense, that's around a million-dollar improvement. So, the city is also not sure if it will be happening soon.
But things like DOTs are sometimes sensitive to citizens' complaints and issues, just saying.
I understand this has been ongoing. I've only lived in Elsworth for two and a half years. I understand this has been going on for a whole lot longer. And I'm, and I know that citizens' complaints, uh, I had a contractor that lives up on North Street, he came by and he says, "We've been fighting this for years." So, um, I think DOT hasn't heard it, and I doubt that they're going to now, so.
Oh, yeah, we'll fail.
Oh, one last question, uh, sewer and water was mentioned. Sewer and water will continue to be part of Phase One, so they can proceed with sewer and water?
Yes.
Okay, so, good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Ask anyone on Zoom.
Internet, Zoom.
Yeah, Nate, is anybody on Zoom?
Uh, checking, Megan. Nope, no questions.
Uh, on the water, I was gonna ask, oh, certainly, come on, yep, sorry about that.
My name is Margaret Drag, I've been here about six weeks, I live with Bruce. Um, and I don't have my hearing aids in, so I didn't hear everything, but well. But it sounded like in front of our house, it's still gonna be gravel, correct, for at least Phase One. Can we count on the city still coming out as construction, and that gets messed up, coming out to take care of that? They were out, I think, about last week. But they didn't put any gravel down, they just used the kind of plows to even it out. But knowing what is gonna be going on next door, that's not gonna be too small a thing to keep asking the city to do.
No, you're correct, I mean, that's something that I think staff will keep, uh, the highway department apprised of. And I mean, and if it turns up, you know, the road is taking a beating, you know, feel free to call the city hall.
Because obviously, the gravel would help too, rather than just having the...
So I got a question, if the road gets beat up because of the construction traffic, are you folks willing to take care of that road that you tore up?
In terms of, like, adding gravel, or in terms of smoothing it out?
Adding gravel, repairing potholes, because I know right now, I'm in the middle of a construction project where I work, and that road is taking a beating. And it takes a beating in the spring, and it takes a beating in the fall with trucks, dump trucks going back and forth. Is that something that you folks are willing to take care of?
Um, I think certainly in terms of puddles, and any of that kind of problem, absolutely.
But I would also encourage, if you notice issues, to call city, call its public works department.
We'll be watching.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think it would encourage the city to get to the paving sooner.
Tell Matt.
Look, man, I'm working on it.
Oh, anyway, so, uh, I think I saw that the water line, that is gonna be a four-inch line. I know there was some discussion in the past, I wasn't quite sure what the size of the water line was, but I think I read that there's gonna be four inches now.
Yes, it's been increased.
Yes, four inch.
Did we close the public hearing?
Well, I did, and then kind of the dust, I wasn't...
It was a semi-close.
I have a question, as this project evolves and they have to come back for the other phases, as abutters, will they be notified?
Yes.
Great, so, every phase, you'll be notified, just so you guys know.
And I think you want to come back sooner than later, because I, because I, there must be a timeframe that if they don't come back in a certain amount of time, they would have to start all over?
No. I mean, if they get the final approval for Phase One, and as long as they complete that within the, um, I believe it's thirty-six months timeframe, then that's fine. And then they come back for Two, Three, and Four, they have thirty-six months to complete that once it comes to nine more. Or do substantial completion, I should say, it doesn't have to be fully completed.
So, uh, somebody makes motion, we have to deal with a paving waiver and stormwater.
If anything requires a waiver, you have to make.
Yeah, and again, I, uh, I think the paving waiver should also include like that extra timeframe where, or however the board thinks is best to measure it, whether it's the ADT, where it goes past that fifty ADT, where the waiver would no longer be applicable. Has to be paved, um, which if they come with Two, Three, and Four months is easy, but if they don't, Phase Two is really the phase, I believe, that triggers it, do you remember if it was part of Phase Two?
I don't.
Do you know, do you know how, I don't know if they still do it, but department heads used to write the motions for the council? Do they still do that?
We did.
End.
I knew that was coming.
They expect me one ordeal, labors.
Listen, to be fair, you guys surprise me a lot, so I'm not sure I could predict some of these things.
Let me just say that I, I think that it should be a time thing as opposed to an ADT thing. Because it depends on how you start counting, but if you start having instructional equipment go back and forth, that is ADT, and that's gonna jack right up when you, when you do the construction, so I, I would be leery of tying it to the ADT.
All right, so a timeframe, and if, for whatever reason, they're not completed, uh, through Phase Four, uh, by that timeframe, do you either have to pave or come back and ask you guys for an extension?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, you could, you could make it fancy and say, you know, not, you know, not counting construction equipment or something like that, but that seems...
How is ADT calculated, it's just, it's on the, it's not by construction equipment, it's calculated by?
It's calculated by the final, yeah, whatever, the final product is going to be.
Yeah, so...
Well, when you're calculating ADT for, I mean, you're right, in the instance of construction, there's its own ADT, but we're looking at the ADT for the development, it's based off of how many single-family homes are.
If, uh, if you make that clear, sure, okay? Just another thing.
We could also do it, the, the earlier of exceeding fifty ADT or...
Two years or something.
Two years, whichever comes, whichever sooner.
Shall we do the waiver separate from the motion to accept?
You said you could make it a condition.
You can make it a condition of approval.
You can make it a condition of approval.
All right, so I move, we, uh, accept final site plan review of Phase One of the major use site plan entitled Old Mill Property Development for Kent Timstone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC, subject to the condition, uh, or, or subject to the granting of a waiver regarding pave, paving, um, of the, what section of the road?
Uh, Old Mill Way.
Of Old Mill Way, um, prior to, or, and up and until fifty ADT is exceeded, or, um, two years expires, whichever is sooner.
Do you want to say two years from this?
Two years is a good time for y'all?
Date.
Uh, it's hard to tell at this point.
Can, can I suggest three years since we have the thirty-six months for construction? That would match, that would match the required...
Yeah, let's do that, for three years, whichever is sooner.
And then we also need...
Do you want the, the, um...
A waiver for the stormwater, correct?
And a waiver for...
For the reten, for the retention of the stormwater.
Retention of the stormwater, yeah. I think it's all in there.
Second.
Old Mill Way?
Sorry, Gary, I'm close, sorry.
Are you done? Before, I want to see that treehouse.
Yeah.
Me too. A few things to do first.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks. Before you're done, should we keep this, the rest, Phase Two, Three, and Four, or do you want it all back?
I will keep Phase One, you should keep the studies that apply to all phases. You don't have to keep the plans unless you want to, but I'll have copies of these plans for Phase One. So if you want to see them again, I always have digital copies for you. Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, just housekeeping first, um, there are, uh, appointments for pinline board that are expiring at the end of June. I just want to check to make sure those who are expiring are still interested in serving. John, your term expires, um, and just want to know, would you like to be appointed for a second, or another term, uh, to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-eight?
Sure.
And then Mike, the newest member, but your spot, your, the seat you've taken, uh, expires on six thirty, twenty twenty-three. As an alternate, you have a two-year term, uh, would you like to re-up for a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-five?
I would.
Yes, you would.
Is that what I, what you said?
Yeah. You have no choice on that.
I don't?
No.
Thank you.
You're supposed to be retired.
Um, as comp plan update, um, for you all, uh, so June sixteenth is our kickoff expo in the Franklin Street Parklet from eleven AM to one PM. If you are available, feel free to swing by, and we'll have information on all the chapters and subcommittees that will be forming, um, for the comp plan moving forward. You can sign up for them, uh, or just simply learn more information about each of the chapters. And you can provide public feedback as well, we're gonna be asking people, like, for each specific, uh, chapter area, what's one thing they'd like to have changed over the city in the next ten years. And every piece of public engagement you turn in, uh, you get a raffle ticket to win prizes, so there's some incentive for you. And then, uh, once they were nearing the end of the inventory analysis phase, but the city has provided the information to the consultant, they're now compiling it to create their document, their deliverable, um, for that phase. And then we have the consultants visiting June fifteenth and sixteenth, which is why we're having the expo on the sixteenth, um, because they'll be in town. And we, um, set up, so we meet with city staff for the most part, but then there are also additional focus groups, um, for community groups. I could not fit all community members in all, like, categories of focus groups in the two days that they had, along with me and with city staff. So they will be returning in July, and I will be scheduling the remainder, uh, for that visit, which will include a public committee, um, focus group, so I'll likely have a member, maybe John, or whoever's available at the time, uh, from the planning board to join that public committee focus group. at the time, um, from the planning board to join that public committee focus group. Unless, you know, you're on the steering committee, you might want to give somebody else a shot to talk to the consultant, but we can sort that out.
You going to let us know what we need to do for the sixteenth?
Yes, I'll be sending, well, I'll be sending out an email.
Okay.
Probably Thursday or Friday this week, about.
Sixteenth?
I'll be out of town.
I probably won't be there.
I'll be back in July, so.
Ireland.
Ireland, yeah.
Releaving won't be back until July?
No, well, I'll be back in, I'll be back in June.
That's all I have.
Wreck the struggle real?
What's that?
That's all I have.
It is a struggle.
Your motion, dude.
Make motion.
Oh, I do have a Mylar for you guys to sign. Thank you.
What's next month looking like?
Next month?